All right, with that, I'll call this meeting of the Great Barrington Planning Board to order for June twenty third, twenty twenty two. Assume the Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. And the Governor's February twelfth, twenty twenty two revised order extending remote participation by all members of any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for no participation by members of the public and or parties with a right. And our requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions at the top of the agenda. You know, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. So we'll begin by doing a roll call vote. Jeremy?
Here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Hank in here.
Oh, Jeremy, he go there.
Malcolm Thicke?
Here.
I'm Pedro Pachano. I'm chairing the meeting today in the absence of Randy. Who is on vacation. Randy Nelson. Do we have any form A's this evening?
I know this is Chris speaking. No, no form A's today.
Right. Also present in the meeting, for those of you who cannot see, is Chris Remble. Our town planner. And other things that he does for the town.
Assistant Town Manager and Director.
The Town Manager and Director of Community Development.
Community Development and Planning, that's right.
Okay, anyway, we'll move on. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of me to six meeting. Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Jeremy? Well, before I do that, is there any discussion on the meeting on the minutes? All right, we'll do a vote, Jeremy.
I'm gonna accuse myself because I read him, but I wasn't present about that one, was it right?
Okay, he'll recuse himself. Malcolm?
Uh, yes.
Jonathan?
Hi.
And I Pedro, I as well. Third item on the agenda is a site plan review. At three oh two Stock, fourth three is two Stockbridge Road, an application from McDonald's Corporation for site plan approval. For plan changes to the drive-through lanes and parking lots at three oh two Stockbridge Road. In Great Barrington per section ten point five of the zoning by law. Is there somebody here to present?
Yeah, Pedro, okay, here we got a hand up. Randy, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist role. Okay, just a second. Here it comes. So you can feel free to turn your camera on and and mic and all that and go through the chair with your presentation. We you can put your screen up also if that is how you want to proceed. So go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Randy Bevall with the Bowler Engineering. Uh, here to talk about the proposed side-by-side drive-through addition. Road.
Randy, before you proceed, your sound, is everybody else hearing Randy?
Breaking up.
Yeah, your sound is a little muffled.
I haven't had anybody tell me that before, but I will try to speak up.
Is there a little feedback? Do you have two devices on or?
I don't.
Okay, well, we'll just have to go with it.
Okay. Uh, do you want, uh, I can, you want me to pull up the drawing? Is that helpful to everybody?
Uh, yeah, Chris, unless you want to do it. I don't know how, um. Usually I think you do it, don't you?
You should be able to share, Randy, if you want to go ahead and drive it yourself. That's fine. Or if you want me to do it, that's okay too.
One second. Uh, can everybody see that?
We can, yes.
Perfect. All right. Uh, so existing McDonald's restaurant, uh, have fifty-two spaces currently. Uh, with this modification would be going down to forty-six spaces. Required by code is twenty-five. Uh, there was a originally, there was some, uh, a few couple of parallel spaces. Here on the rear property line, uh, which we've eliminated and added a green area with, uh, three maple trees in there. Um, the configuration of this doesn't change drastically with adding the side-by-side. We just, uh, hold this in a little bit. We add this island in here, which creates the the two lanes. Drive-through operation is a single lane and it, uh, merges into two. Uh, we're relocating the, uh, currently they have digital menu boards and a canopy. So, uh, one of each of those, so we're relocating that to the new position on what is referred to as the primary lane. The inner lane, and then we would be adding a second canopy, a second menu board, uh, secondary lane. Lane on the inside is twelve foot wide because that's got curved on both sides. Uh, lane on the outside is ten feet wide, uh, different order points. And then once, uh, once the order is taken, the car receives. Um, this line is a line that's painted on the pavement and it's actually on the screen on the monitor, and that's how they store the orders so that they're in the right sequence. So with them, it merges back into into one line. So adding the side-by-side adds about, uh, three cars stacking, uh, which assuming stacking isn't really an issue on the site given, like, the building approximately the exit. I'm I'm not certain of that, but we add about three cars. Uh, it just allows for the orders taking a little more efficiently. Uh, more efficient helps improve the customer satisfaction. And, uh, I know there was a, uh, so that that's pretty much it as far as the improvements. Just note that the area of the new drive-through is, it's done in concrete, so it sort of defines the drive-through lane. And there's a, uh, a yellow painted stripe along that outer edge of the concrete pad. Uh, that sort of further delineates the drive-through lane. This island is, does have a six-inch crease curve. Um, same as the inside lane, you know, that has a curve. So, um, that's, uh, really the proposal in a nutshell, and, uh, I can answer any other questions forward may have for that.
Randy, are you familiar with, um, section six point two of the zoning by law having to do with landscaping requirements?
I did.
On Stockbridge Road?
Yeah, I did see that. I, uh, I apologize. I don't know. I guess, Chris, that was you that I believe afforded that information to our office. Um, yeah, so I, I, I did review that. Uh, my knowledge of those trees had not been added, uh, as part of that prior approval. Um, so, uh, you know, if that's something that needs to be done, then, you know, we would ask that, uh, that would be part of the condition.
Okay, um, Randy, would you mind stop sharing the screens so we can see the other faces?
Yep.
So, Chris, a question here with regards to the the landscaping is that we have these uh, requirements from a previous application that haven't been met? Um, is it best to impose new requirements and kind of forget about the old ones or what's the best way to proceed?
Uh, okay, so just to bring folks up to date, uh, this, um, McDonald's restaurant was a subject of a special permit a few years ago. I think it was twenty seventeen where, um, restaurants in Great Barrington require special permits. Uh, and, uh, originally, the restaurant was built with a special permit in twenty seventeen. McDonald's came forward to renovate the restaurant, and that's the that's the building and facade that you see there now. Uh, as part of that approval, the Select Board required landscaping requirements be met along the Stockbridge Road. There's kind of a grass strip, um, on the McDonald's side of the public sidewalk. The existing property line is just on the backside, just on the McDonald's side of the public sidewalk along Route seven. So in that grass strip between the sidewalk and the parking lot, um, the western parking lot. Um, there's a requirement for landscaping for trees in there. And during that previous approval, both the Planning Board and Select Board noted that requirement, and there was a condition imposed on the special permit by the Select Board. So, um, it's come to our attention that that, uh, requirement was not met at the time or since. And so I think that, uh, if the board wanted to move forward with this uh, application, you you could either reiterate those requirements um, and set a deadline or something like that, or impose different requirements. I must confess from a staff perspective, um, I frequently miss this particular section of the bylaw in my review. As you know, the section six point two is the required Route seven landscaping trees. Um, and so while McDonald's came forward and and the, um, Bowler team came forward with this proposal, our attention was focused on the eastern side of the site to re- to remove parking, which is great, uh, unneeded parking and asphalt and add grass and trees over there as as Randy showed in the plan. So three trees gained over there, but we were all kind of oblivious to the west side of the site because no work was being done there. So we just didn't even pick that up. It was in a comment that, um, Chair Nelson made to the board that we thought, oh, gosh, we've missed the Route seven landscaping requirements. So that's why that's up here, uh, in front of the board. I think you can proceed either by reinforcing the previous conditions and moving ahead or imposing your own, whatever you think is necessary.
What about asking them to resubmit showing the the planting?
That'd be fine, or a condition. Um, conditional approval, whichever you feel is.
Condition hasn't worked so far, so.
Right, whichever you feel.
We should try a different approach, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
Offering, I'm just thinking out loud, and I don't know that, you know, if an approval was granted, I don't know if another step if there was, maybe it could be tied to that. Uh, I'm just suggesting, uh, fucking out loud.
Malcolm, you got something?
Well, I think either way we do it, um, we're gonna have to depend on them to, um, to follow through with it, and we're gonna have to, I I think, be a little more diligent, making sure that happens. Uh, I, Jonathan, I don't see anything, you know, whether they include it in this plan or whether we reference that plan in your approval, they still have to, they still have to do it.
Um, yeah, the one thing that gets me is that the the regulations are strict in that they're not allowed a certificate of occupancy until they've complied. And apparently the certificate of occupancy, obviously, after the previous renovation was granted. I'm not sure that, yeah, so we, is there, uh, is there an avenue here to send a, uh, an extra note to the building inspector's office with regards to this? You know, this point in the, in six point two, to make sure that before they're allowed to use the drive-through again, that they plant some trees?
Uh, what happens with site plan approvals, um, is I write up the approval, and if there are conditions, I write those in as well and highlight those for the building inspector. Uh, so they are brought to the attention of the building inspector. In this case, I don't think there's a certificate of occupancy that would be issued.
They already had one.
They already have one. Um, there are electrical permits, I think, and maybe some building permits for those structures, the canopy structure. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, Randy, I don't know when the work is proposed, but you know, if you wanted to do the construction work in summer, you, you know, the idea of planting time is not until the fall. So, you know, it is you know, you'd be holding up permits until the fall to make sure the plants are in. Uh, you know, it's, it it might, it might be a bottleneck, um, so just throwing that out there.
Unfortunately, I don't, uh, I'm stepping in on this project, uh, tonight. So I don't know that, uh, when they are planning on building it. I would assume that this given. But, uh, towards the end of the year, I would say this is, uh, probably.
I'm missing many words, Randy. It really sounds like you're speaking from a tunnel. Uh, and I don't know what what it might be, but, uh, that whole sentence I missed.
I'll, I'll try to speak up. I said, I, uh, I'm stepping into this project tonight. So I don't have all the critical details of the project schedule, but I'm assuming that being that it's, uh, end of June, that this is probably a uh, August, September start date. Uh, typically, once approval is granted, or generally another thirty days plus before they actually build it.
Uh, if that's the case, uh, if it's the board's preference to see a resubmitted plant, you know, if if indeed the construction is not until later in August, um, I think there would be time to for the applicant to submit a a plan that complies, uh, before this board gives formal approval. But it's up to you. You can do it either.
No, I think. Jeremy, you got any thoughts? Can't hear you.
You're muted.
Chris, when you mentioned, uh, deadlines, so what is, what does that do? Um, if we were to condition it with a deadline for the trees to be planted, it doesn't really do anything, right? If we allow them to do the work, um, before they are?
Right, yeah, I guess, um, my point was that the construction would probably occur naturally would occur before the tree plantings, which are best done in the fall. And that would sort of put any leverage the board had in permit granting on the backseat. You could lose that leverage.
Yeah.
Uh, to to see the trees planted first. So you should either condition an approval or request a compliant plan.
But they could, they could do the work, uh, even have all of that work completed and just not use that second lane un- until the trees are planted.
Sure.
But, but how, but what is the, what is the enforcement? Like, what is the mechanism for for that?
Called the building inspector.
No, I know, but what is, what's the stick?
I think as Chris described, this site plan approval uh, will reach the desk of the building inspector with the the condition. So we can add whatever conditions you you'd like to add to that approval.
But.
The question that would guarantee, you know, put one, you know, letter credit or something of that nature. But I don't know if that's typically done.
Yeah, we don't have that written. I know what you're talking about. Sort of in lieu of uh, fee, we don't have that written into the bylaw, unfortunately, for this item.
Yeah. And it's become, and it's sticky because they, you know, they ignored this provision the last time. Uh, so that makes this little, it makes me a little cautious about how this is going to be enforced.
All right, so do we have any comments on any other concerns with the application?
Um, the the trash enclosure is not moving. Is that, is that correct? Um, and is there enough room to drive by there? I'm not sure from the. Yeah.
Did you hear that, Malcolm?
Uh, was that a yes?
Said, yes, there's enough room. It is not moving.
Okay. I I can't tell from the diagram how much room there is.
Looks like, um.
This is for the pass-through traffic that's not going through the drive-through lane, right?
Yeah, there's like the, it's like a cement pad that's in front of the, um, trash enclosure. And so I think you can get up on that a little bit to go by.
Yeah, there's at least a minimum of fifteen feet, uh, from the edge of the drive-through lane to the curb.
Okay. To the, to the end of that, uh, concrete pad in front of the trash enclosure?
I don't think so. I don't think that, but.
You add to the new road, I mean, to the outside curb that we added.
Yeah.
Minimum of fifteen feet there, which is a standard that McDonald's use for a bypass lane.
Is that pad, is that pad raised from the, uh, the surface of the road at all? Okay, so it doesn't present any kind of obstruction.
It's like a quarter inch or something.
Yes. Typically, it's all the same elevation.
Right.
But I mean, the design is smart because the s- the spaces they, uh, removed were the ones that were going to cause trouble. Anyway, with people backing up and people going by and you know, interfering with that outside lane of the drive-through.
One of the first iterations of the plan was that those spaces on the west side were going to remain, but they weren't uh, going to be head in parking spaces. They're going to be rotated and to be parallel with the drive-through lanes, which was so it's decided to the team just decided to remove them in lieu of, you know, plant there.
Remove some parking spaces for for theory. And, uh, given that the the sycamore is there, the the best sycamore in Berkshire County, as far as I know. Uh, can they get some relief in terms of the number of trees they have to plant?
I don't think that's.
If you take that as one tree and then plant two more or plant whatever.
It it's not clear in the in the requirements, but that was part of the discussion in the last special permit, that there's a wonderful sycamore. Why interfere with it or take away from it? Um, and so the condition on the special permit the Select Board granted was to work with the Tree Committee to figure out where and how many trees to plant uh, on that western lawn area of the McDonald's. So you can, you can certainly reinforce that condition, um, in your approval if you want.
Well, why would, if if they have not met with the Tree Committee, I have no idea if they have or not. If they have not met with the Tree Committee, why don't they meet with the Tree Committee and then come up with a plan and submit the revised plan? That seems pretty straightforward.
And and look at the last, uh, uh, special permit that was issued and 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 work from there.
Yeah.
I mean, it still has to, doesn't it still has, it still has to conform to the the special permit that was granted though, right? It can't be less than what? Less than what was there.
Right. So the the application came in, um, was it last week? I'm not, I'm not sure what the decision deadline is on this one. Let me just see. There's a sixty-day timeline on special uh, site plans. So let me just check real quick. Uh, decision deadline on this particular application is August eighth. So at some point during during July, um, if if, uh, if the Tree Committee can get convened, that would meet Jonathan's, uh, suggestion.
Or meet once a month?
Twice every the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday.
That's, that's us, or are you talking about the Tree Committee?
Oh, the Tree Committee is, uh, call of the chairperson. I don't think they have a regular schedule. They might. I could be wrong about that. So you could shoot to come back to the Planning Board at the July twenty-eighth meeting, Randy? If you get enough info before then.
Yeah, I think we can give them feedback that I don't think there's anything particularly offensive about what they want to do. It's just I would like to see a complete site plan.
Okay.
Any other comments, Jonathan, on the application?
No.
Jeremy, you got anything else?
No.
All right, well, so what we typically do is run through site plan, uh, the site plan approval requirements. So why don't we do that? And then we can, um, I'm not sure that there would be a motion necessary, but we'll give instruction to the applicant as to what we, what we want. Does, uh, anybody else have it? I have it right in front of me, so I can just read it out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, first item for approval is minimize the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, six-inch caliper or larger, the length of removed stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, the extent of stormwater flows increased from the site, soil erosion and threat of air and water pollution.
None of that pertains.
I don't think anything applies either. Draining patterns are going to be the same, so. I'll move on to number two without objection.
Well, I wonder if, um, so if they're gonna be putting, uh, if they're gonna be doing work along Route seven in planting trees, um, I mean, do we need to put anything in there to be careful about the sycamore?
No, they're not in the same area. They're separated by the public sidewalk, and and I'm sure the Tree Committee will think about that as well.
Okay.
They won't be planting under the crown.
Right.
Hopefully.
All right, second item is maximize accessibility and pedestrian vehicular safety, both onsite and assessing and exiting the site.
This is actually increasing the accessibility, right?
Well, not for pedestrians going through the parking lot. It's increasing the traffic there, but I, that's, that's that's my, uh, I'll, I'll deal with that. Over to Price.
You don't, you don't have to get out of your car, Malcolm.
No, I walk over.
All right, without objection, I will move on to the third item. Just to minimize obstruction seen used from public, publicly accessible locations. Think that that's applicable.
We can still see the sycamore.
Yeah. Item four, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking stores and other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. So there's no change to that on site. Any other comments on this item?
Yeah.
Number five, minimize glare from headlights, minimize glare into the night sky, and minimize overspill into adjacent properties. So we didn't discuss that. So these canopies and the menus, I'm sure, I'm assuming are backlit and the canopies last some sort of down-facing light. Is that right?
Canopy does have a down light in it, similar to the canopy that's there, uh, their digital menu board. Very little light, you know, uh, they adjust to be like that.
Did you say that the back, the backlit menus adjust to the night sky?
They do, yeah.
Okay. Does the board want to see cut sheets or anything else for the new light and the canopy?
Do you want color temperature for that? Because, what? I don't know. I mean, depending on how bright it's going to be under that.
Yeah, it's no, I mean, we already have a digital menu board there. We're adding the second one.
All right, any comments on the lighting?
So Pedro, I was talking about the lighting under, not the, not the board lighting, but, um, the canopy lighting? The canopy lighting. Um, do, do we want to specify color temperature?
Yeah, it should be. I mean, we have been, um, uh, specifying three thousand K or less in, in other applications.
Yeah.
All right, Randy, so you, did you get that? Maybe the, your, I think the board's gonna ask for a revised site plan, so maybe you include something in there about the type of light that'll be included under the canopy. Making sure that the color temperature is under three hundred Kelvin. Three thousand Kelvin, sorry.
Three hundred.
Yeah, and I would just notice that again, out of the same canopy that's there already.
All right, without objection, number six, minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as used from public ways and places. All right, without objection, number six, minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as used from public ways and places. Any comments on that? There are none. I'll move to number seven, minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations. On the premises involving the use, storage, handling or contaminant containment hazardous materials. I think that applies here. And then the last one is to ensure that, uh, they are complying with the zoning bylaws. So we have. Um, an item about the lighting. So more information that we'd like about that. And I'd like to maybe hear some direction for the applicant regarding. A revised site plan or how to deal with the landscape issues.
Also, I have a question. Is, he's making reference to the canopy. Uh, but I don't see the canopy on any of the plans. What?
It's that dotted, that dotted line you see in, in the, on the island and then there's the existing one next to the menus.
Want me to share that again?
Good idea.
Not called out on there. So that, that rectangle, that's a canopy.
Yeah, there's also a detail, uh, one on the detail page. Page seven of the, uh, application.
Not see.
Right there.
Uh, Randy's got it on screen. Speaker canopy. That's the title.
John, you good with that? Any comments?
Okay. It's strange that it's, it's, uh, dimensioned to the top of the canopy, not the bottom, when you've got vehicles going underneath it. Typically, typically for anything on a sidewalk, we have a ten foot clearance. And that's nine foot eleven, something to the top of it.
Uh, they, they do have a, the gate, what they, the first one, the gateway with the clearance bar, uh, that's at nine foot four.
Not, not, not nine feet?
Nine foot four to the clearance bar. That's the detail on the same page as the canopy there. Looks like it's nine feet even.
I said, nine, nine feet even.
Yeah.
Yeah. Correct, correct.
So John, what you're referring to is the provision in the sign by law. Um, I don't know that we have provisions for this.
No, we don't. I'm just raising it as a question. Nine feet is not overly tall.
No, it's a limit, uh, tall thing, vehicles with bicycles on top from smashing into the pickup overhang.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I need, any further comments on that? And do you want to put a requirement on there or you just want to? Uh, bring it to the attention of the applicant?
No, it's on private property. It's up, it's up to them. I, it just seems a little low.
Okay. All right. So if I, if we don't have any other comments here about the application, again, I'm looking for some direction on, uh, how to advise. The applicant. For their review with the tree commission, if that's, if we want to. Make a recommendation, if we want to just go ahead and, uh. Make a motion to approve or disapprove. We want him to come back with a revised site plan. Anything else I missed? What do you guys want to do?
Uh, I'll make a motion that they. Uh, meet with the tree committee as required by the special permit and revise their plan to reflect. Uh, the planting that is approved by the tree committee and resubmit that to us.
Does that require a motion or is this just a direction to the applicant?
Yeah, I had the same question.
That's pretty clear direction if you all agree with it.
Yeah. Jonathan, do you want to add that, um, um, uh, approved by the tree committee and that. Satisfies the existing special permit?
Well, I said, I cited the special permit.
Okay.
As the reason for reading with the tree committee.
Just so the tree committee, well, anyways, I mean, they'll know that they don't have, they can't disregard that.
They will, yeah. Randy, we can work together to make that happen.
All right, Randy, so you clear on what, what do we'd like to, to see when you come back?
Two items, trees and, uh, the information on.
If you need to. Includes just some information about what lights are going to go in, under the canopy as well, please?
Yeah, that's what he said.
I did, okay. I thought he said heights of canopy, not lights of canopy.
Do we need to second vote?
No, I don't think, I don't think, yeah, we need to do that. I think it's just a recommendation for the, for the next meeting. Um, so with that, I think we can move on to the next item.
Jonathan, but Jonathan made it as a motion.
Yeah.
So, so is she either? So he can.
He can withdraw a motion or you want to, or would you like to have a vote?
I don't care if there's a vote or not. I'll make that as a recommendation.
Okay, good. Is that good, Kim? All right, Randy, thank you. We'll see you next time. So, uh, next item, item number four on the agenda, site plan review for three sixteen North Plain Road and application from Kathleen McCormick. For site plan approval to permit the two family residential use of a single lot at three sixteen North Plain Road. In Great Barrington per section eight point one and ten point five of the zoning by law. And Ms. McCormick has joined us. Would you like to introduce the project for us?
Sure, um, for the record, Kathleen McCormick, um, tonight I'm here in an individual capacity, not representing anybody. So just for the record. Um, it's my private residence. Um, the project location is three sixteen North Plain Road. Um, and just for a little history on the, the project, I, I purchased the property, um, in September of, um. Two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty. Um, I'm very familiar to the neighborhood. I was born and raised in three eleven North Plain Road. Then most recently, since I've been back in the Berkshires, I've lived at three twenty one. And then I sold that and moved to three sixteen. So I've got the triangle down. Um, it's kind of, uh, thirty five years within this little triangle. So. Um, very familiar in the area. I purchased this property. Um, it was eight and a half acres with a, um. A Cape house on it. Um, I've been restoring and renovating the Cape house since I purchased it and that's my current residence. Um, it's in an R two zone. Um. I brought a four may in front of this, um, board a few months ago in which, um, we divided that into two different lots. Lot one is one point four one one acres and lot two was seven point one two acres, I believe. Um, and, and that's how the property stands right now. Um, the project that I'm bringing to you, it's in an R two zone. Um, and I'm looking to do a two family residential use of a single lot. Um, under eight point one and, um, more than one principal structure on a lot in accordance with four point two point one. And it's, it, a two family residential is by right in. Um, an R two zone, but requires site plan review. So that's kind of why I'm in front of the board, um, tonight. The, the purpose of the project, I'm, I'm constructing another residence and the, the goal is to provide some housing options for my aging parents. To bring them on, um, into town because they are currently outside of town in Otis. And I think in the future, it would be nice to have them have the ability to be on property with me. Um, so. With that intent, it complies with the master plan. It, uh, creates diverse housing options. And also addresses the lack of senior housing in the area. Um, so the project is. Um, seventeen hundred square foot, one floor, um. Dwelling that has a two car garage. It's going to be, um, sighted behind the current. House, um. And it is shown on the, um, the site plan and that site plan shows the division, shows the lot one and lot two that. Um, previously came before the board. So, um, with eight point one, um, a separate building is allowed on the structure. Um, but site plan review is required to meet this section of eight point one point three. Um, the building inspector has to sign off. Um, obviously, since I'm doing new construction, there'll be a building permit and a C of O would be. Um, issued before it could be occupied. There'll be a separate kitchen, toilet and bath. Um, the, the proposed new structure is a two bedroom, um, structure. Uh, the current house that I live in right now has its, uh, its own septic system and is on whose atomic water. The proposed structure is going to be also on who's a tonic water and is actually going to tie into my existing leach field. But there'll be an additional, um, tank for the new structure added and those two will connect to each other. Um, I've spoken to, um, the board of health on that. Um, Rebecca and I had a discussion. Uh, she wanted Mike Parsons to weigh in. He weighed in that, um, that was acceptable to, um. To him and so we've, they both are satisfied that that's a, um, acceptable way to proceed. It will, um, meet fire code. It's also a one story building, so we don't have to worry about a two story access and egress. Um, off the rear as required. The, um, bylaw requires one and a half parking spaces for each dwelling. The current dwelling has, um, two parking spaces that are, that are shown on the plan. The new, um, dwelling has a two car garage, so it provides for adequate parking. And there's plenty of, uh, permeable surfaces on, on the one point four plus acres. And I also requested to the board in writing in my cover letter to waive the traffic impact study. Um, as it's a residential use in a, in a residential area. So those are my, um, the mate, the highlights of my presentation. Chris, if you. Maybe want to put it up, I can answer any questions. It's a pretty simple site plan.
Yep, we can do so if the board would like to see it.
It's okay. Has anyone told you you're a Pimby?
I'm a what?
A Pimby.
No, you are the first, Jonathan.
That means parents in my backyard.
Oh, not yet. You could say no. Just kidding.
But you're adding two bedrooms to the septic system. Don't you have to expand the leach field?
No, um, the flow and the capacity is, uh, for five bedrooms as designed. And I have currently a three bedroom house and we're proposing two. So the only thing that was a limitation on the system was I currently have a fifteen hundred gallon tank. So I need additional tank size and, um, the smallest tank is a fifteen hundred tank under, um. The, um, code now, so.
Yeah, okay.
I, I have a question about four point two point one. Um, don't you need the, um, bylaw change that we just voted at town meeting for this?
Um, the cleaning up of the bylaw does, um, it, it does make it, uh, cleaner in my mind. Um, so I'm, I'm willing to proceed with the fact the attorney general will accept the. The bylaw and it's reverts back to, um, the data publication. So I think it's covered.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's covered, but I think that it would be conditional on the attorney general approving the bylaw change.
We, I think the timeline the, um, attorney general gave us was, um, like mid-August, so. Hopefully that's plenty of time.
Um, so, so it would be conditional on building permits all the way until mid-August or I can proceed, proceed at my own, um. Discretion.
I don't.
At your own risk.
Site plan review, uh. Oh, until it's approved. I mean, it's approved based on the Bible that hasn't been, um, uh, approved yet. Yeah, I think this, this board could probably act if it desired and, and, you know, say that. Your approval is conditioned on the attorney general's.
Right.
Approval of the recent.
Right, but she couldn't get a building permit until the approval from the attorney general, right?
Possibly not. I, I, I can't speak for the building inspector, but.
Um, I could also, I would be willing to, um, I would be willing to. Put a different condition on just so that I could keep moving because I do have, um, a contractor that I do not really want to lose. Um, so, um, I do, um, it, I do control both lot one and lot two. Um, so I could, the only thing that would be, um, missing, I think Chris and I went through this, um, briefly. I think I would need one and a half acres because it's on town. It is on service by town water. It's just not by town sewer. So to comply with the way that it is written right now, I think I would just need to enlarge. Lot one to be one and a half acres. Um, so I would, if the attorney general. Does not pass, I would be willing to agree to adjust my, um, lot lines to. Included to be one, one point five acres.
Just push it back a little.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was still need another action by the planning board though, to, uh, you, you'd have to submit another form A, right?
I, I definitely would need to submit a form A, but if, um, the attorney general fails to approve. I would be fine with a condition to submit another form A, um, which you obviously know it complies. So by adding more acreage. Um, that there would be no problem with that.
Any other thoughts, Malcolm?
Uh, I, I don't see how. How this could get started without the attorney general's approval. That's, that, I mean, because our bylaw requires that. Um, double the. Uh, the, uh, area and the frontage. Uh, it also requires the frontage, which I, I think your frontage is right on the mark for the zone right now. It requires double the frontage, doesn't it? Yeah.
I think just the area needs to be double the area. You need frontage for the residential use and. Double the area, but you can allow for reduction if it's on, um, if you're on town water.
The area with frontage and other requirements, the bylaw should be met for each building. So the area with in frontage have to be met for each building. Yeah, that's what the, um, that's the confusing language that, that's why we went to town meeting to revise it. So it sort of reads as if you'd need double the frontage, you know, enough frontage for both buildings.
Then you wouldn't really have a two family.
Right, right. And then you would just split, if you had enough frontage, you would just split the lot into two. Um, so. Um, I think this board can act if you, uh, want to and you can put that condition in that it's subject to the attorney general's approval. I, I don't know how that impacts the building permit issuance or not. The attorney general's approval.
We'll just do our job and, and.
Yeah, and if the attorney general does approve, then the bylaw is effective as of town meeting date.
Right, right.
Otherwise, otherwise you're in this gray area between the, between the issuance of the special permit public hearing notice, which was back in February-ish. And the attorney general date. So i- it's as if you're operating six months of the year in a gray area and you don't know which bylaw you use. That seems a bit. Seems to create some difficulty for everybody.
It does, and I, and I feel that, um, I have the right to move forward. It just is at my risk, my own risk. Um, that's my legal opinion. Um, I understand the consequences. I may have zoning enforcement and I have a very easy way to. Fix the zoning enforcement, which would be to move that, um, the lot line, but I will have a definitive answer before I have a certificate of occupancy. So the building inspector could always withhold my certificate of occupancy until I correct the zoning problem.
Right.
So that's what I will talk to Ed May about.
Good. We'll do our job. You do yours and you'll get your building. And I can't wait till next Tuesday when I can tell Ed that his daughter referred to him as elderly.
Well, he, I will tell you that my parents are. Well, he, I will tell you that my parents are on the call right now, so. I tried to use the, the thesaurus to come up with a better, uh, word, but it is what it is.
All right, so if, if I, if the rest of the board wouldn't mind, uh, holding this procedural issue to to the end of this review, I'd like to maybe focus on the merits of the application. If anybody else has any, any further, uh, comments on the application itself.
Jeremy, you got anything?
I do not.
So, I mean, I, I'll just bring this up, but normally, you know, when we see this type of thing, we usually have a little bit idea about, for example, um, changes to the topography, drainage patterns, that sort of stuff. We also see, um, driveways and the way that they will interact with the new structure. Um, I'm fine not seeing that. I think he, uh, is grown up enough to figure that out on her own, but does anybody else have an objection? And not seeing those things? Uh, no. Okay, well, uh, hearing no other comments, I mean, do I hear a motion for approval, disapproval?
I'll move to approve the site plan.
I'll second that.
As submitted.
All right, second.
Do we have conditions that we'd like to impose?
It's, it's just, uh, it's conditioned upon the AG's approval of the zoning change. Failure of that would require coming back with a reconfigured lot.
Right, so I think that covers the, the one thing we didn't do before the motion was go through the site plan approval points, and I'll take responsibility for not doing that. Um, perhaps we can hold off on the motion for a moment so we can run through these items.
Great, part of the discussion.
Yeah, so the first item again minimize the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, six inch caliber or larger, the length of removed stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, the extent of stormwater flow increase from the site, soil erosion and threat of air and water pollution. Okay, you have any comments on any of that? Are you taking down any trees?
Um, there will be a few trees that are being removed. It was cited in an area that has the, the least amount of trees. There is some dead trees um, in that area as well. So when we, um, actually go to do the excavating, we're gonna selectively re- remove the trees that are, that are required just to open it up to have some lawn and, um, be able to get some sunlight in there, but just a few trees will be being removed.
And the balance of this site is, is wooded, is.
Correct, yeah, the whole, um, the, the seven, well, pretty much, uh, um, three quarters of, you know, the whole front of the site is lawn. Um, like the first, maybe one eighth of that site where my current house is. And then it goes all the way back to like the solar farm in Van Duzenville, um, behind home gas being wooded. So there's acres and acres of woods in the back.
And the site is relatively flat, correct?
Correct, there's, um, there will be, there's probably about four, um, four feet of grade change through that whole area that will need to be, um, just evened out with the foundation. Um, but the, there's the driveway as it kind of exists right now. There's already a driveway that almost it's more of like a tractor road kind of right there, but we're just gonna take that in to the house. So we cited it based on the existing conditions to have the least amount of impact.
Any other comments from the board? I'll move on then to maximize accessibility and pedestrian vehicular safety on both the site and accessing and exiting the site. So this is normally where we see where you're gonna put your driveway. For example, and where the parking is gonna be, but if you're saying you can continue that drive to the house.
If you see how there's an arm on the, the driveway behind the current structure, it's gonna basically wrap by the fire pit into the driveway. So it'll go in front of the, the house and just pull right in. It'll just arc right in there.
It's gonna be a shared driveway, I assume.
Correct, yes, shared driveway. It's just gonna be extended. Um, it shows, uh, the, the area that is shown on that is the driveway of the current house is the paved area, but there's a gravel road that actually goes in and right by that fire pit into the woods right there.
So John and Chris, are there any, um, requirements for a shared drive or two-family residential scene of lot that Kate should know about?
No, no, and this isn't a common driveway. You don't have two separate rooms.
An owner, yeah.
All right, anything else on this?
I hope they pay for plowing.
I'll make that con- a condition.
I should say that the audience has the right to speak before the board votes.
All right, now, the third item is to minimize obstruction of scenic views from a publicly accessible location. Not sure this, uh, application.
And you can't, you can't see the solar farm from North Plain Road anyway, right?
No, and you really, you have to go to my back corner to see it.
All right, moving on, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor services, service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially zoned or used. So cars are in the back at least of the primary structure, so they're not really seen from the, uh, from the driveway. And I guess Kate, I mean, you know, garbage and recycling and all that stuff, I suppose will be taken care of inside the house somehow or in the garage or something like that.
Correct, it'll be inside the house.
Any other comments on this item? Item number five, minimize glare from headlights, minimize glare into the night sky, minimize overspill into adjacent properties, so.
Uh, I did include in the application, um, some, some spec sheets, cut sheets on, um, the basic lighting, residential lighting that I was gonna have. They're dark sky compliant.
And so the, yeah, the color temps here three thousand and twenty-seven hundred, and they're both pointing downward. So, you know, the comments on this item, anybody?
So the Go ahead. Am I on? Um, and so the first light, the, um, is that, so will we be able to, um, so you can see it lit up right from the side?
Um, when you say the first light, do you mean the lantern or the, like the barn light?
The lantern.
Yeah, the lantern is gonna be actually on the porch structure. Um, there is a picture in my application of kind of like an artistic rendering of what it's gonna look like. And those are just gonna, um, be sconces on both side of the, um, the entry door. Um, they're gonna be in, basically, they're gonna be under a port, a small little porch right there.
And so this is gonna basically just affect your house.
Correct, yes. And it, and it's far away, the way that that actually is because it's blocked by, one of the reasons I situated the garage on that side is the closest neighbor that I have is to the north, so that kind of blocks the, um,
Yeah.
the living space from there. So, yeah, you won't see, um, the porch lights will be, um, kind of sheltered. The only person that would see it would be my current residence.
All right, we're good? Item six, it states to minimize unreasonable departures from the character materials scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. I think we can say that this is to the scale and character of the neighborhood.
I know you hate saying that.
Number seven, minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations on the premises involving the use, storage, handling, contaminant containment of hazardous substances. So that's not applicable here either. So the eighth item is applicable, which is to, uh, comply with the provisions of the bylaw. So we have this, this question here about, uh, four point two. So further discussion on that, we have a motion and a condition on the motion. The condition, if I'm stating it correctly, is to, um, comply with the zoning by law by complying or by um, having a condition that the AG approve the recent, uh, update to the zoning by law. So if he does that, then she'll be in compliance and she'll be good. If, if, if it's not approved by the AG, then she will have to return with either a revised site plan or a different plan to the planning board. Does that sound right?
Yep.
I, I don't think you had a second.
Second.
Jeremy. Yeah, Jeremy will second it. So before we take a vote on, on this item, I will ask if anybody in the audience would like to make a comment. If you do, please, uh, raise your hand and I will make sure that you're able to comment. All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on site plan approval. Jonathan?
Hi.
Malcolm.
Hi.
Jeremy.
Hi.
And Pedro votes aye as well. All right, Kate. Hopefully we'll see you again. Don't take that personally.
Thanks.
Take the attorney general to lunch.
Just don't spend more than fifty dollars.
Cheap, cheap lunch.
All right, item number five. Site plan review for Getting Street. Application from Philip Morrison for site plan approval to authorize the existing two-family residential use with an accessory dwelling unit at Four Getting Street, Great Barrington, per section eight point one, eight point two and ten point five of the zoning by law. Is Mr. Morrison with us?
Yes, right here, Philip Morrison. Go ahead, sorry.
Chris, would you like to help Mr. Morrison with, um, showing us some details of the application up on the screen for everybody to see? Or maybe Mr. Morrison, you'd like to do on your end?
I'm ready to, if you'd like me to, but either way.
Whatever you'd like to do, uh, Phil, you can go ahead, proceed at your own pace. If you need any help, let me know.
Okay, thank you. My wife Julia and I bought the property in two thousand and one as a three-family. Um, it was in rough condition and we lived in it for three years fixing it up before buying a property in Umar Borough and have held on to the property since two thousand and one, but now we've become tired of being landlords and we put it on the market as a three-family, um, received a full price offer without inspection contingency on the first weekend, which is the market we're in. And the buyer, um, as far as I know, went to the building inspector and asked about converting it to a four-family, and that's when we found out that it is not a three-family, um, much to her surprise, even though we can trace it back decades as a three-family. It has three addresses, it has three service entrances, three furnaces and six exterior doors. We pay sewerages as a three-family. Um, so in this application, what we're asking to do is by right having it a two-family, um, and then have a, one of the apartments is quite small, four hundred and eighty-three square feet as an accessory dwelling unit within the existing building. We're not changing anything as part of this application. We're just want the town to recognize what it is.
Okay.
It does have two driveways, both two cars wide. One driveway is on two thirty-six state roadside. The other is at Four Giddings. Um, again, two driveways, both two-car wide and three of those four spots can be two cars deep easily to, no, there isn't, is never a need for seven cars, but there is parking seven cars. Um, we have had a site plan survey, which is in your materials that I sent Chris the stamped copy. Happy to bring it up on the screen, like. So, we should proceed.
Yep, um, should we bring it up for the public or does anybody on the board like to bring it up?
Well, it doesn't, uh, it looks like it's a non-conforming structure. Uh, both in terms of the, the three-family or two plus ADU, uh, and the setback from the side yard. He's not making any changes, physical changes to it. So are there any? Is there anything that we need to be concerned about, Chris?
No, I don't think so, Jonathan. Uh, and this was in my email notes to the board, um, on Monday night, uh, in advance of this meeting that, yeah, it's clearly a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, non-compliant for the setbacks, um, but there's, as you said, there's no work being done. It's not gonna trip a building permit or anything. Um, um, so all this is doing is going through the, uh, section, eight point one and eight point two to bring it into compliance and that's it. Still remains a this, the non-conforming structure still remains. What they're trying to address here is the use itself.
Use, yeah, okay.
So in the future, if somebody wanted to make a change to alter the building in some way, that might trigger the issues with the setbacks, but that's not, uh, in the proposal tonight for you.
Anything else, Jonathan?
No, that was, that was pretty much it. You said that, are there, are there two means of egress from each apartment?
Correct.
Okay.
And so.
You got anything? Sorry, Jeremy. I'm just going in the order that I see you guys on my screen. Jeremy, go ahead.
And so the, the parking is part of the structure, like the pre-existing non-conforming? I guess it's a question for Chris.
I don't understand the question.
Not, not to the use, cause, um, so, um,
There's enough parking on the site to use.
So we need, uh, okay, but the parking is to the use, right? Not to the.
Right. The amount of parking is determined by the use. In this case, it's a two-family that requires two spaces each. The ADU requires one, so a total of five are needed. You've heard that seven at least can fit.
Yeah, but.
It will comply.
So, but what I, but what I was getting at is that, so usually we, we need to see like the layout of the parking. Um, right?
Oh, I think that is pretty clear on the site plan that was submitted.
I can bring it up on the screen if you want.
I mean, I, I see the driveways.
Yeah, there's plenty of parking.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Chris, if you can bring it up.
But I, I, I'm just, am I remembering this wrong, Chris? The site plan that we saw, wasn't it site planned? Um, on, uh, Bridge Street, um, and concerning the parking, um, in front of a garage, um, and then, didn't, oh, gosh, I can't, I don't know. I might be totally remembering this wrong. We made a recommendation. Was that, was that the one? We made a recommendation in the select board, then disregarded our recommendation? But I guess that was different.
It was one on Bridge Street, but I don't know what that was about.
Yeah, I, I don't think that it's the same apples to apples.
It's clear from the site plan, there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, these are gravel driveways with asphalt aprons to the streets.
Yeah, I, I mean, I drove by the site. Um, okay.
You got anything else, Jeremy?
Um, no.
I don't have any other questions since it's a site plan review. We'll go through the criteria again. Which for some reason is disappeared from in front of you. Here it is. Again, uh, there's gotta be a way sometimes not to waive site plan, but to, but to say, you know. Anyway, let's go through it. Minimize the volume of cut and fill. There's no, nothing being cut or filled here, nothing, there's no change. Maximize accessibility and pedestrian vehicles or safety. Again, there's no change. Has, have you had any accidents or injuries or deaths on the property due to vehicular traffic, Mr. Morrison?
None.
All right, good enough. Minimize obstruction of scenic views. So nothing's changing. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling visibility of parking, storage, outdoor services. Again, nothing is changing. Uh, minimize Greg. Minimize glare from headlights, minimize glare into the night sky, minimize over-spawned adjacent properties. There's no change. You guys can stop me if you have any comments on any of these.
Go ahead.
Minimize unreasonable departure from the character material scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways. Again, no change. Minimize contamination of groundwater. There's no change from the the use. That has been going on there for decades. And then number eight is to comply with the bylaw, which is what he's trying to do clearly. So. Do I have a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the site plan review.
Second, anybody? I'll second that. We'll do a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. My apologies to the attendees. If anybody has anything to say, I know I should have done it before the vote, but I'm new at this, so. Please forgive me if anybody has anything to say, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you.
Good luck and we hate to lose you to New Marlboro, but.
And so now, sorry for my benefit, I can market it as a two-family with accessory dwelling.
What I'll, what I'll do at this point is I'll provide you and the building inspector with the with assigned. Site plan approval.
Right.
And that. You know. Yeah, I don't know what's adequate for for your legal situation, if they need a certificate of occupancy or anything from the building inspector, I don't know, but if they do, then. At least the building inspector has the paperwork he needs from from this board.
I mean, there may be, there may be code issues. But since you're selling it as is, I don't think it's an issue.
As is with no construction, it's probably, probably doesn't trigger anything, but you'll have everything you need from this board to be legal under zoning.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks. See you again. Alright, so item number six on our agenda is housing strategies. Ms. Nelson has asked me to hold off on on discussion unless anybody has anything that they want to bring up for next meeting. Because she would like to participate in these discussions. Anybody got something you want to bring up?
So.
Jeremy?
Well, I mean, I think just this last application was kind of interesting in that, you know, and so that. And maybe to follow it, that this now becomes, the the use becomes conforming now, right? As a two-family plus ADU.
Correct.
The structure is not conforming.
Well, the structure is not conforming, but the use now becomes conforming. And and it seems, I mean, I mean, I guess he had to do, you know, I mean, it was not. I mean, it did cost him something, but it seemed relatively painless.
Previously, this would have required a full special.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I mean, I think that's, I mean, yeah, I I I I'd like to hear back. How this, how this, how, what goes on with this, because I mean, this is, I mean, this is really hopeful. Because, yeah, I mean, I was just remembering other situations and it seems like this was like nothing, so this is really great.
This was an, you know, an existing use that just needed to be legalized.
Yeah.
And it, for all intensive purposes, meant met all zoning with the exception of that setback. So it was kind of a no-brainer.
Yep.
And we, and we've had a bunch of these things in the past where people have had non-conforming, I there was one up in the hill, I remember that.
Yeah, there's a couple up on the hill.
Yeah, but they they're usually doing some work, right? And so that's why it was more.
Yeah.
Yeah, and yeah.
And this is with spelling, that's the.
Yeah.
You know, I share an interesting thing that I that I kind of came across as I was looking at this item. You know, with the building code has these sprinkler requirements, right? So they don't require sprinklers in one and two-family. Structures. That are under, get this, fourteen thousand four hundred square feet. Right, so any, any one and two-family structure that's under that size is exempt.
You said fourteen. You said fourteen thousand, yeah.
You guys are hearing, right? Fourteen thousand. So how many, think to yourself, how many units can you fit in fourteen thousand four hundred square feet? So the good news, but the. From the building code is that if if Mr. Morrison, for example, was looking to build a an ADU. Or do, you know, do an addition or do a renovation to a structure that had three units, he would not have to, and it was still under fourteen thousand four hundred square feet, he wouldn't have to sprinkler. But if somebody wants to build, you know, thirty-five hundred square foot building with three apartments in it, they got, you know. Technically, they'll have to put a sprinkler in it because it's got three units. So, you know, one thing I was, I spoke to Chris earlier about this because I think it's kind of absurd. And this is state building code, this is not the internet, you know, the way the building code works is that there's the big umbrella international building code and then the state amends it. So this is the the international building code requires sprinklers in every building. The state has amended this provision for one and two-family only. But it makes no sense, right? Because again, especially in the context of the housing situation that we have. So one thing I'm trying to do, that the current, the code is currently under review, the building code. Is currently under review for an adoption of the twenty twenty-one code at the turn, at the beginning of next year. And I believe that they they do have one or maybe even two public hearings left. So I'm going to try to get involved to bring this issue up to them. And I'm trying to to build some consensus from the town and from this board and from others. In the, you know, with PRPC and every, to sort of, you know, bring this to the attention of the the building boards of regulations and standards for their consideration. Given the housing problem, right? Because again, if you say, you know, we got like Bobby Houston, for example, if you wanted to put his three. Three units in one building, you would have to sprinkle it, sprinklered it, which would automatically have added an extra hundred grand or so to his project. Which is obviously in the context and the housing context that we're in, doesn't make any sense. So anyway, I wanted to bring that up to you guys. Anything else? Any future housing strategy conversations that you guys would like to have?
Well, I I mean, I think, Pedro, your point is interesting one, because if we're saying, you know, two-family. By right and residential zones in Great Barrington, plus an ADU. Then, you know, then this becomes a really limiting factor if you have them all in like this property in the same building, right? And so it seems like at least for for our town, we'd want to see it, it go up to. It, the trigger to go beyond three.
Yeah. I would like to see, you know, up to eight. I mean, in fourteen, just do the math, how many units can you fit in fourteen thousand four hundred square feet?
Yeah. But I don't know.
Just simply at a thousand square feet a unit, nice, nice apartments, right? About thirteen units. I understand you have more people living in there, you got shared walls and I understand all that kind of stuff, but.
Yeah.
That fourteen thousand four hundred square feet is to me nonsensical. But how many houses do we have in town that are fourteen thousand four hundred square feet?
Yeah, but I, but I wonder if like the approach should be like small goal, big goal, like go for the big goal, but make sure you get at least the small. You know?
Right, I'd like to see them reduce the size of the of the square foot, let's say, you know, an eight thousand square foot building.
Yeah, and then, and then not, yeah, yeah.
And then add the three, you know, three, maybe even up to four units and something like that.
So is is this state law or is it a regulation that gets passed by an agency?
This is an amendment to the building code, so it is state law, it's a, you know, it's part of the general laws. But it, and it also is passed and developed by an agency called the Building. Board, the Board of Buildings, Regulations and Standards, BBRS. So they're the, they're the board that discusses all of this stuff. Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a. I don't think it's a law passed by the legislature, I think it's a. Regulation passed by the board.
Yeah, what I meant was that the bill that that going, that that conforming to the building code is, I think, is part of the general laws.
Correct, you have to comply with the building code and the BBRS shall set those standards.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's that sort of thing, yeah.
So, so are you, so Pedro, are you looking for something from from this board and from the town to weigh?
I don't know, I I'll, you know, I'll see what what I can, what, I'm trying to figure out what the best way is to approach it, is it showing up to the to the. Public hearing and given testament, is it writing a letter with, you know. This board's approval or this board's recommendation, maybe even the select board. Maybe I can get Tom from VRPC, you know, that kind of thing. I'm trying to figure out what the best way is to have an influence, because it's kind of late in the game. They've been reviewing the the building code, I think, for about three years. And so it's kind of late in the game. So I'm trying to, you know, do something that'll have as much impact as as possible.
So related to the house, before you get off the housing topic, we we are continuing to work with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission on their their study of various types of. Housing strategies, whether they be some zoning strategies or other regulatory strategies to increase housing opportunities. Financial incentive strategies or tax incentive strategies and those sorts of things. So BRPC staff is is working on that, gathering examples from other towns and. Hopefully providing kind of a roadmap for each strategy, you know, how we would plan, study, pursue. Legislate whatever strategy we might want to go with. Some may be. Discussed more by this board, you know, if they're zoning related, for example, some may be. Discussed by the housing subcommittee or by the select board themselves or by the, if it's a new program by the housing trust fund, so housing trustees, so. Number of different strategies being looked at and hopefully we can discuss those when the chair is back at your July meetings.
And it seems, it seems like the, I think it's the American Tiny House Association. Is approaching the town about. Some sort of program they're trying to put together that actually assists homeowners in preparing a plot. That is bringing in. Power and water and sewer to a movable tiny house site. I think they're having ongoing discussions. I don't know how far they've gotten with anybody at this point, but it's it's in the works.
Alright, anything else on housing strategies?
Well, I wonder.
I wanted to, Harry, hold on, I wanted to thank you guys for changing the title of that item, by the way. Go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering if we can plan something with the trust and either. Like the trust and a and a joint meeting with the select board or with the trust and the housing subcommittee.
To what effect?
Um, just so. I I think so there's more coordination and strategies and just, so I feel like, you know, at least from where I sit on the. CP, on the Community Preservation Committee, it seems like. It seems, it seems overly adversarial and I think if the trust meets. With us or, you know, and the select board or the subcommittee. So that we can regularly lend our support to what they're doing. I don't think it can hurt.
When you say adversarial, you mean the relationships between the boards?
Well, it just seems like they're overly questioned for what they're trying to do. Compared to other proposals brought forth by other town committees or boards.
Well, I can tell you one thing, it'd be really nice if the chair of the of the trust. Would come to us whenever they have a project to get our advice to make sure that they're taking advantage of the zoning. I would love to see that.
No, he only goes to the select board.
But but I think, but I think a good start to that might be like inviting the trust to. Either our joint meeting or to the subcommittee.
But at this point. You know, it's difficult. Even even in the era of Zoom for boards to to find a good night to meet. In fact, the trust is meeting right now.
Yeah.
And I couldn't be in two places at once. Ideally, I am the sort of go-between between all these boards. It's been tough lately, especially when they're on the same night. So the housing trust is up to full membership now, which is, I think, full membership now, which is great. I'm sure they're discussing their next strategies in addition to completing the the work that they are already doing, so. I guess short answer is everybody has a lot to do and we'll see if that makes sense and I'll continue to talk to the chairs of all the boards.
Yeah, you should, you know, if you, if you do talk to the chair of the trust, you know, they. Let them know what I just said. It'd be, it'd be really good, you know, when they have a project. That they understand the zoning. I mean, for us, I sitting on this board, I think we would all want that because we work hard to 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 have a, you know, a bylaw that works really well.
Yeah.
And that that could actually accomplish a lot if people understood how to use it. Alright, any other? Items in this topic to to discuss? Okay, hearing none. Next item is boarding subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Anyone? John, the DAC, how's that going?
It's not, I don't know.
Alright, no boards and tell me.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Okay, sorry.
So we're trying to, so we're trying to schedule a CPC meeting, which Chris has thrown out the tentative date. Of Thursday, the twenty-first of July, at which point, you know, it's when we start to review the CPA plan. We do this every year at the beginning of the, I guess, the session. And so I'll be sending that around just for this board's comments. To, it can either be collectively or individually. About the plan. And so again, that can be if members of the board wants to make recommendations. For that, which can be allocating funding in a specific category, percentages or whatever and so forth. Which the, which the CPC has been sort of unwilling to do in the past. And I mean, personally, I'm going to bring it up again, but. I'd like to have you weigh in on it as well.
They've been unwilling to change the percentages?
Well, unwilling to set percentages, like to commit to even last year to commit thirty percent. Of the funds to affordable housing, although we spent well more than that. But at the beginning of the session, before seeing the applications, we're unwilling to even do that. Of course, I went for the full, you know, I went for, what did I go for, Chris? Sixty-five percent? Well, no, five percent, five percent. I went for the full. Or ten percent, yeah, so sixty-five percent. They didn't go for that, but then I went for thirty percent and they didn't go for that either, so.
You gotta keep trying, Jeremy.
I know, so. But I would like.
Let them get to you.
You need to work on your pitch.
Well, I I know.
Need to bring like signs, maybe a PowerPoint.
You need to bring specific projects is what you need to do and not just an idea.
That, 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 yes, anyway. We, the, this, the Community Preservation Committee has like one power. And that's the power we have. And, you know, beyond our approving and the amounts that we approve. And so that we can exercise our, you know, and this, this followed a whole long discussion about the housing crisis that we're in. And the committee seemed, and this, my criticism is that the committee seemed unwilling to exercise the one power that they have.
Which is to approve projects.
No, to, we can also set.
We only recommend projects.
Yeah, recommend to town meeting, um, but um, we can also set. We can decide how the funds will be divvied up before projects come.
Well, you can, you can specify seventy percent of the money goes to affordable housing, but if there's no projects that come to spend that seventy percent, where's it gonna go?
No, that seventy percent for that particular year will be put aside and can only be used in the future for affordable housing. But it would be.
But if nobody comes up with any projects for it, uh, how is it gonna be spent?
It gets banked.
It gets banked.
If nobody, if nobody comes up with projects next year or the year after or the year after that, I mean, if they, I mean, how many affordable housing projects have been turned down by the CPC?
You are, you are having the discussion that the CPC always has about.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and, and I'm just.
We're only hearing Jeremy's viewpoint on this. Which I, I don't.
Which is all, all that I'm saying.
Here, if I could, if I could be so bold, the point is, I thank Jeremy for letting this board know that the CPC is going to be reviewing the plan. And he looks forward to your input over the next month, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Townplanners, you're up.
We can, we can put that. Future agenda, if you want to discuss it.
The only report that, that I was going to give was related to those housing studies that we're doing, which I. Mentioned under the previous topic, for the next meeting, I don't have any pending applications, so I think we can. You know, maybe spend, spend a good amount of that meeting on the housing issues. And strategies.
Is that the meeting on the fourteenth?
Uh, yes.
Uh, the RPC has their annual meeting, uh, electing new officers and so on, on the fourteenth at five thirty before our meeting. So.
Can we meet later?
I wonder if we could push it back a half hour, because it's gonna be a short meeting for BRPC, but uh. Uh, it is a meeting I would like to, to be in.
Malcolm, is that enough time or should we push it back to our old meeting time, seven?
Um, I, I talked to Tom Atusco about it, and he said it's gonna be a short meeting, so I don't think it's gonna be more than an hour.
Yeah, that should be enough time.
Yeah, if it's.
One of those ones.
If we could push it back, I mean, if we could push it back to um, either six thirty or seven, I, I would appreciate that. If we don't have a full agenda.
Well, I'd love to say that we can do that, but I'm only the vice chair.
No.
So maybe, I mean, I.
Maybe Chris can take this under advisement and discuss it with the real chair.
Okay, six thirty or seven next time.
All right, good.
Thanks.
Citizen speak, we have two citizens in attendance, would either of you'd like to speak? Raise your hand, please. All right, so nobody wants to speak, so at seven thirty-three without objection, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.